Welcome, everybody, to the Get Growing Weekly Work Session. I'm Coach Ashley and we are joined this week by Greg.
Hey, everyone, welcome. Thanks for joining us again today. We've got lots of good information again. We're very excited.
Yes, very, very excited. Today, we're talking about events. And I've got some slides prepared for you, kind of broken things down to sort of organize the topics that we'll be covering. And specifically, really, the angle that we're taking because vendor events and events like this in general are a very broad topic. And there's a lot of people with a lot of opinions and a lot of things that they do that work. But we're going to, we're going to do our best to cover this as comprehensively as possible and in the best way that we can, right, that we are uniquely suited to. So, welcome, everyone, as you're coming in, definitely come in and say hello in the chat. And I am going to pop over and let me see. I have, once everybody's here, Greg, I have a poll and I'll let you know it's in the slides. Want to ask everybody a question before we go off to the races here. All right, I'm going to share my screen and we're going to get going. All right. Great. All right, so here we are. Welcome. This time, we are talking about vendor events. So, let's talk about this. I actually have a question for you guys. For those of you who do vendor events, or maybe who have thought about doing vendor events, Greg, if you could enable that poll, that'd be super awesome. When you think about using vendor events to grow your business, which phase of the process brings you the most frustration? Is it the planning phase, so getting ready for the event, booking it, you know, getting all of your ducks in a row so that you can go and, and do this event? Is it working the event when maybe you are kind of nervous? Or you're not really sure how to interact with people? Or to, you know, really get the most out of what you're doing? Is it after the event, figuring out what to do with those stacks of paper, right? So, let us know in the poll. We'll keep this going until we've got basically all of you. Most of you have popped in, by the way, to do that. Thank you very much. As you're coming in, come and answer this question for us. This is, I'm curious about this. I have some ideas about it, but yeah. Okay, how do I move this out of my screen? I'm sorry, guys. Hang on just one second. This will not let me move. All right. All right, cool. So, Greg, are you seeing, it looks like it's moving around a bit.
It is. People are still voting a little bit here, but it's looking like planning and after the event are almost a tie, really, really close, but working the event is definitely not the frontrunner. It's the least challenging, I guess, the least frustrating.
Yeah, I mean, what's frustrating about talking about what you love, right? All right, so we'll, we'll get back to this here shortly. I want to start off with a quick note, just, you know, to give you some expectation of what we'll be doing here. This is not going to be the definitive how-to on how to run vendor events. This is really going to be a comprehensive strategy, right? So, what we're going to teach you today is a way that you can employ a comprehensive strategy to make any kind of vendor event, or trade show, or farmer's market, or whatever kind of live format booth-style event that you go to, as successful as it can possibly be. So, I know a lot of leaders teach different, you know, different approaches. Maybe you do giveaways, maybe you don't, maybe you do samples, maybe you don't. We're not going to get into the minutia of that today. What we're going to talk about today is everything that you need to have in place before you start so any approach you take can be successful. This is, these are fundamental things that most of us don't have in place that are going to save us a lot of time and help us become a lot more successful in our events. Now, what we're here to do is to make your approach, whatever your approach may be, more streamlined, profitable, headache-free, and easy to duplicate. Really important there. All right. Now, today, we're going to cover first, how to systematize your event planning from end to end so it's easy to repeat with great success. If we could just see a show of hands, how many of you feel like you might spend way too much time planning? And I don't know, that might be a difficult question to answer because some of us don't even necessarily realize how much time we spend planning things, right? Now, we're also going to talk about simple, easy ways to collect tons of names and emails and phone numbers because, as you may know already, most people aren't going to be primed and ready to go to buy a kit right there at the table if they are fantastic, but we know that is the exception, rather than the rule, and it typically takes five or more interactions with someone around a particular topic before they're ready to pull the trigger. So, the goal of your events is to collect tons of names and emails and phone numbers so that you can continue to follow up, so that you can get those new members. All right, and then, of course, we're going to learn the one thing that most of us are doing to sabotage our success where these events are concerned, and how we can turn that around very quickly. And then, we're going to get to Q and A, so we're going to try to get through the content as quickly as possible so we can go through these questions that you've got. All right, what's our status on our poll there, Greg?
There were quite a few hands that went up, probably about 25% of the audience here.
Sure, sure. But, but on the, the question about the phase of the event process?
Yep, that, the after the event has pulled into the leaderboard here at 59%. Planning comes in number two at 37, and then, working the event is 22. So, yeah, it's, after the event is definitely the biggest here. It pulled ahead at the end.
All right, cool. All right, well, we're definitely going to touch on some of that here in a bit. So, let's go ahead and get the ball rolling. Now, the number one problem with events of any kind, if we're honest with ourselves, is the time that it takes to pull them off, start to finish. They are a huge investment of time. And planning is busy work, and busy work is not an income-producing activity. Now, if you guys haven't already watched our training on income-producing activities, you can go to Week One and, I believe, Two as well, but it's all through the 90-Day Challenge in the Help section of Get Oiling, but, but definitely Week One of the 90-Day Challenge, really kind of breaking down what is the difference? What's a real income-producing activity versus an income-supporting activity? You know, an income-sustaining activity? Now, if you don't do enough real income-producing activities in your business, you're not going to get enough growth, and systems will save you time so that you have more time for those income-producing activities. So, that's why we're talking today about creating systems around how you do events so that your time is freed up, so you're never dropping the ball, and so that your events are always as successful as they can possibly be. So, when we talk about creating systems for events, we're going to start with the beginning, right? So, you're going to create checklists for each stage of the process. Think about it this way, and, and I encourage you guys to start to adopt this, this perspective in your business, because there's a lot of free form, right? Because you are your own boss. You can work however you want to. You can follow up however you want to or not. Most of us have had that problem at some time or another, right? There are challenges around that anyway that persist long into your business, no matter what rank you're at. Start to think about the things that you do over and over again, the steps that you tend to repeat, the patterns that exist in your business. And start thinking about how you can put those into categories so that you can go, and when it's time to perform a specific task, you say, okay, I got that done, that done, that done, and that done. Now, if you're naturally blue, you really, 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 really need to work hard to figure out how to do this. If you're red or you're green in terms of your personality, you may already do this. But you might be able to dial it up another notch and become that much more efficient. So, create checklists for each stage of the process, so before the event, during the event, after the event. Get those checklists in place. And so, we want to start with our pre-event checklist, our lead systems for the event. So, that's our during-the-event checklist, and I'm going to go down into each of those, and Greg is going to help deepen the understanding and, and actually show us how you can access these things inside of your Get Oiling system. And then, finally, your post-event checklist, what you do after the event to get rid of all that headache that most of you guys clearly have following your event. Okay, I am really, I don't understand why I'm not able to remove this thing that just popped up in the middle of my screen, so bear with me, guys. Forgive me, I can't, my cursor is not working. Oh, my goodness. Oh, hey, Greg, could you take over the screen share real quick? Or maybe turn it off?
Sure, I'll turn yours off here, one second.
Thanks. There's a cursor issue. Sorry, guys, tech problem on my end. I've got the poll pop up here where 60% of you guys do have that post-event issue. All right, now, there we go. Having, I don't know if the, the new Zoom on my newer computer is problematic or not, but that, that may actually be the case. All right, I'm, I'm going to grab my share back here so you guys can continue watching this. And again, sorry, let me, let me see. Actually, if I share this way, let me know. Greg, are you able to see the full presentation from the full screen?
Yep, I certainly can.
Fantastic. All right, so, let's talk about our pre-event system. So, this is what you're going to be doing long before you book your next event. You're going to put your pre-event to-do list, so that checklist that I just talked about, into a Get Oiling follow-up plan. Now, we normally think of follow-up plans as things that are just reminders for us, you know, to do particular things after we say, meet someone. So, there's a prospect, and now, I want to make sure that I remember to give that prospect a call on Friday, or I remember to, the next day, send an email to that person. You can create follow-up plans like that inside of our system, and we will talk about that in a little more depth later for post-event, which is really important. But did you know that you can use the follow-up plan feature inside of Get Oiling to give yourself a to-do list leading up to your events? Right, you could have six events on your calendar coming up this year that have preparation stages that span that entire, you know, six months ahead of time. And you can have all of those perfectly organized inside of your Get Oiling system that, if you have your coach turned on, is emailing you and giving your, your to-dos every day and reminding you of what you need to do. You can actually have that inside of your Get Oiling system. So, that's the first thing that we're going to show you today. It's really important that you use something like this, especially if you have multiple events going on, but just to make sure that you're staying on top of the ball, make sure that you're not duplicating your efforts, and make sure that you're getting everything done. And so, first, what you're going to do, and then, we're going to show you how to do this. This is for your pre-event. First, you're going to create that follow-up plan inside of Get Oiling. We'll show you that in a second. That's under Contacts and Settings and Follow-up Plans. Then, you're going to create an event in Get Oiling. Now, if you watched Week Two of the 90-Day Challenge, then, actually, no, it was Week Two. Anyway, if you, I'm always referencing those first two. But in the 90-Day Challenge, we definitely did go over using events, and we have gone over it in this series as well. But there is an Events feature in Get Oiling, really super cool. You can use them for offline events and online events. You create an event there for the vendor event, or farmer's market, or wherever it is that you're going to be doing this type of activity. You're going to create that event, and that's under Events, and then, Create. And then, you're going to want to uncheck the Allow Self-Registration box just to keep things from getting confusing later on, all right, under Registration and Payments. So, don't worry about it too much, just make sure you check that, or uncheck it, rather, so it's not checked. And then, you want to add that follow-up plan in that first step that you made to this event. And then, from there on, your event items are now in your to-do list inside of Get Oiling. So, Maestro, could you help us? Could you show us how to get this done, starting with the follow-up plan and connecting that to an event?
Absolutely. Let me share out my screen here. All right, can you see the screen?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so, follow-up plans, like I actually just said, under Contacts Settings. Follow-up plans over here. If you have an existing one you want to copy, you can click this little icon and I'll copy it, but I'll just create a new one here, and I'll call this My Event Checklist. Event Preparation Checklist. Go ahead and create it here, and I'll just put in a few items here to just sort of demonstrate what can be done. Let's say, three months before, you have to finalize the payment. So, I'll say finalize payment. And this is actually kind of neat here. You can go Negative Days, and this is relative to the date. So, this might get a little techie, but I'll throw this out here. So, like, if I go down and type in, I don't know, let's say, what would that be, negative nine, oh, let's see, negative 60? And Add. Now, we have a follow-up plan with, you know, so 60 days before the event, you have to finalize a payment. You'll get a reminder on that. Let's say 30, 30 days before, you need to, you know, rent your furniture, or whatever you, whatever you need to do for the event. And also, I'll add those two, and then, some follow-ups, maybe the day after. Let's say, two days after, you send a thank-you note. And Add. Okay, so, now, we've got an Event Preparation Checklist here, and you can put in whatever you want to, of course, it's really depending on the event. Now, we go over to, I believe it was Create an Event, which is under Create on the Events menu. And we'll give it a name. We'll just say, this is my farmer's market. Downtown, you know, I mean, the downtown farmer's market, come visit us at 123 Main Street. And we'll just say, this is a little bit in the future. I'll just roll it ahead a few months here so that the follow-up plan looks, you can see how that works. Uncheck the Self-Registration box and Create. So, now, we have our basic event in here. Bear phones, obviously, you might want to put, you could put more in there if you wanted to. But now, this is where that follow-up plan comes in. So, the, it's under the, the to-do items, and you can actually, I mean, if there's a specific event that has a to-do item that's one-off, you can go ahead and add that one at a time. You don't need to use a follow-up plan, but the follow-up plan does systematize, and it's really nice. So, I'll hit Add on the to-do list here on the event, and now, we should see the new Event Preparation Checklist that I put in there. Go ahead and hit Add, and so, now, you can see, given the dates that we put in here, so I put this is roughly a couple of months ahead in the future, you can see that the minus 60, the minus 30, and the two days after the event, they're all based on the event date, so they all kind of work around that. As you can see how this, how handy this could be, if you do the same types of events over and over and over, you can get it, so, you know, totally systematized, all the steps are down, and it's just a matter of a few clicks to get that going, so. And then, these will-
Your to-do list will pop up in your dashboard, right? So, when you log in, it'll say, here's what you need to do today?
Yep, it shows up both in your dashboard, and it'll be in your email, too, your daily activity email. So, now, if I scroll down, you know, I don't have any events with the tasks due specifically today, but I think there was one, was it the 11th? Yeah, there it is. Okay, so, it shows you the event. It's got it. You can click on it. It takes you there, and then, you can see what are your to-do items for the day. So, yeah, it reminds you in a couple of different ways, both by email and on your dashboard.
So cool. Yeah, and guys, just so you know, the, the, creating an event feature for this, for your vendor events, if you want to invite people to come to an event like that, and that is something that, that you find is a successful approach for you, then, you know, by all means, share this. This is really more of an inter-system function to make sure that you've got organization around it. Obviously, it's going to show up on your events page if you have that enabled and shared on your Get Oiling website, so people will see that maybe you're doing a class at this place, class at that place, vendor event here, farmer's market there, and they know where they can come and find you. But something for like this, for a vendor event, people don't generally RSVP for, so that's why we're not allowing that self-registration. It just makes it really simple. So, yeah, really cool. Everybody is, oh, this Get Oiling never ceases to amaze me. Super cool, so helpful. This is so cool, right?
This is awesome.
Yeah, all right, so now, we've got our, our initial setup there. And, and don't, don't forget, guys, like, in that to-do list, you know, put your, you know, I, I need to have my, if you use samples, I need to have my samples assembled and prepared by two days before the event. Or I need to, you know, whatever it is, think about all of the things, the materials you have to prepare, even if it's like organizing, like, I need to check off having loaded everything into the vehicle, right? Whatever it is that you need, you can put it here, and, you know, if it needs to be due the day before, a couple of days before, and so on. What we're talking about right now primarily is leading up to, so those negative days. So, use the negative day in the follow-up plan, and you can create a checklist. Sweet. All right, I'm going to steal the screen back. And go back to, hopefully, if I do it this way, it won't mess things up again. All right, so that was our pre-event systems that allow us to get everything that we need to do to succeed in this process into our to-do list. Next, we're going to talk about Lead Systems for your event. And by Lead Systems, I mean the means by which you get leads or new contacts into your Get Oiling system, into your network, into your list of prospects that you can then share with, that you can then follow up with, right? So, there's three ways that you can collect leads during your event, three primary ways. First is using a Get Oiling landing page. And we actually have a really cool feature called Kiosk Mode that you can enable so that when people come to your table, and maybe they want to sign up for the giveaway that you have, or for the recipes, or for the invitation to your next class, or whatever it is that you're offering at your table, when they opt in, they put in their name and their email, it refreshes the page, so you don't have to worry about going back. You can basically just have, if you have it on an iPad, you have that person put in their name and email, and then, you can hand it to the next person, where they put in their name and email. It just rotates like that. And then, you also have Text-in Campaigns. We actually did this at Aroma Sharing. This was a lot of fun, where you could text in a keyword, and we were giving away a bottle of rose oil. And so, all you had to do, and it's just like any other texting system, you text this, you know, set of numbers, this word, or is, yeah, in this case, it was this word to this phone number, and then, you automatically get those messages. That's a really cool thing that you can do at events. It's easy for people to do. Just take out your phone and text, who can't do that, right? And then, finally, and this actually is something that I know a lot of our, our personal coaching clients, they still do paper because a lot of people at some types of events are maybe just more open to putting their name and email down on a piece of paper. That's fine. You can manually import them into your system. So, those are your three ways to collect leads. And of course, guys, if, if you're talking about, I saw a lot in the comments there, you know, I don't really do them. I feel like they're not profitable for me, or I'm nervous about the investment, both monetarily and in terms of my time, because I want to get the most out of it. If you understand that this part right here, this is the, like, the important thing that you're shooting for. You're looking to get as many of these contacts as possible. It's the whole point. It's not just so people can see you, right? Unless you live in like a super small town, and now, everybody that is in the small town that was there, like, whatever. This, this is, this is the point. People need to not just know that you're there, but they need to know that there's something that you have that's valuable to them, and they need to say, I want you to be in touch with me, and that's the goal. So, you're going to collect their information by one of these three means. And keeping these best practices in mind, first, you're going to use unique tags for each event, okay? So, a tag is something that you can apply manually. We've, we've actually gone over this, I believe, last week, didn't we? In the Contact Manager Training. So, use unique tags for each event. That way, into the future, if you wanted to search for, you know, people who were at a particular event, or if you were looking at a contact and you weren't quite sure where you knew them from, you could look at the tag that's related to that particular event that you were at, and you'll go, oh, yeah, that's right, they were there, right? Now, if you're using a combination of paper, text-in, or, or kiosk with your, with your landing page, use the same tag if your prospects are opting in for the same offer, right? So, if you have a, if you're giving away, you know, a sample of lemon oil, right? And, and you're going to use the tag lemon, right, or holiday lemon, because it's a holiday event and you're giving away lemon oil. Use that tag for whatever email campaign that you choose to use, if you do. Use that tag on your, your landing page in kiosk mode so that that immediately applies to the contact. Use it on your text-in campaign so that, you know, so that they get the lemon campaign that you put in. And we'll go into this here in just a second. And then, if you're going to do a manual upload of, of contacts, you can also tag them when you do so as well, and so, you would tag them with that. That way, your follow-up for all of these people is the same. So, if people opted in for a particular thing, their follow-up needs to be the same. See that system there? People might have come in on paper, text, or email, but you're going to have the same assignments to follow up after the fact. All right, you want to create a campaign for your offers and giveaways. This is something that you don't necessarily have to do beyond a single message, or maybe a couple of messages. It can be very, very simple. Definitely recommended. Obviously, if you're using text-in, you are going to create a brief campaign there. And just as an example, that free sample of lemon I mentioned, when they opt in, so, let's just say that you are doing samples at your table. People will opt in to get your four favorite lemon oil recipes, and they'll get it via text or email, and they won't get that sample unless they opt in, right? That's, that's the deal. You need to know how to use this. You need to know what it's about. Put your name in, in email in here, and you're going to get that via text or email, and here's your lemon oil, right? All right, so you can use that again for text-in or landing page, or that manual import. All right. Now, before I get, before we get ahead of ourselves, we're not going to talk about what we're messing up. Go ahead, if you want to take, there we go, I'm going to stop my share now. Perfect. So, Greg, if we could look at, let's see, in that order, what was that? So, with the Events Lead Systems, first, I guess, maybe we can show the kiosk mode of the landing page?
Yeah, sure. That's, okay, so, so any, it's not, I'll start off by saying, the, the landing page, so, go to Contacts Landing Pages to see your landing pages. And there's a kiosk mode link here. Now, any landing page can be put in and used in kiosk mode. So, all you have to do is find it and click it, and it just, essentially, what it does, so normally, a landing page, when you register on it, like, I'll go in here and I'll click on, you know, one of these, one of these landing pages, just showing you the setup. So, under Settings, Page Settings, there's the setting here about where does your visitor go after they've registered? And in this case, you know, it's set up here to be my website. Now, what a kiosk mode does is just, it doesn't send them to that destination. It just cycles it around so that the next person can register. So, you want to create a landing page that is something like, I can, I can show you this briefly, like, let's say this was a picture of whatever you're giving away. You could say, register to get, you know, to win a free, whatever it might be. And then, we go ahead and save it. I'll save this one, and I'll call this my Event Landing Page. And now, if I go back over here, I'll have an event landing page, and if I go to kiosk mode, you know, here's what I just made. They put in their name, email, phone, push the button, and then, the page will come back here blank for the next person. So, like Ashley was saying, it basically, basically hand it from person to person to person, or just have a computer sitting there, or maybe you've got a couple of them sitting there, but that's where, that's what kiosk mode is. Otherwise, if you just view the page back over on Landing Pages, it'll take them to wherever that you want them to go. So, you definitely want this for a vendor event of some sort to use that kiosk mode. What was next?
Yeah, so the next one is Text-in Campaigns.
Yes, okay. So, the text-in campaign, you can create those under Contacts Settings, Campaigns. And when you're creating a campaign, this is where you can specify the keyword. And you can see some of these in this demo account have a text-in keyword already set up. That's what's at this column is. So, I'll go ahead and create, and I'll show you how you do that. I'll just call this one the Farmer's Market, Market Text-In Campaign. And I'll just copy and paste that over here. But here's where you put in the text-in keyword. So, let's say you want to, lemon, that's the keyword. Now, if you hover over this, you'll see that whatever your text-in keyword actually also becomes your tag on the contact record. So, if it's a new contact, well, actually, any contact that texts in, texts in will end up with that tag on their account. So, you want to coordinate that kind of with, with your other, if you've got a landing page set up, you want to use that same tag on there. But then, that's all, you know, all you have to do, click Create, and, you know, specify. Here's where you would write the message, like, be probably something pretty simple. I mean, unless you want to follow up with more, you could just say something like, thanks, you're in, you're registered, and we'll get the free sample. And Add. And then, you want to make sure that it is sending out, day zero, we'll send it out within like a minute or so of them texting it in. So, that's, that's definitely what you want to do there, give them that confirmation right away. But that's really all there is to set that up. Pretty simple. Put in the campaign, the name, the text-in keyword, which is also the tag, and then, add a message. And you can, if you want to, you know, send more than one message in reply, too, but that's totally up to you.
Yep. Lisa asked, where will that contact go? I think that was in relation to the kiosk landing page. Lisa, that contact is going to go into your Contact Manager, and it will have the tag that you have applied to that landing page. Did we show where to put the tag on the landing page? I think we did that.
Oh, probably, no, I didn't really talk about it a lot. So, let me go back to my event landing page. I'll click on that to edit it. And under Settings, Page Settings, this is where you can put in the tags. So, here, you know, let's say I want to, let's add a tag for lemon just to match it up. And that's all you would have to do, I think.
Awesome. Okay, now, if we could, if we could pop back over to the, the texting part, we've got some questions about that. Lynn, Lynn's asking, what is a text-in campaign? Lynn, this is basically if, if you wanted to have people come to your booth, and instead of entering their name and email on a page, or writing it down with their hands, they can take out their phone. They could use, you could use your Get Oiling number that you get through hitting the chat feature there. And when you set up this campaign, they're going to text, in this case, like what Greg just showed, the word lemon to the number that you have with Get Oiling, right? And when they get that, they will immediately receive a text that will- And when they get that, they will immediately receive a text that will share some kind of information with them. And that will also put them into your contact manager, where you can continue to use that texting feature to communicate with them further. And they're going to be labeled with that lemon tag, just like the, the landing page would have done. Okay, and then Jacqueline asked, do you type your message in the subject of the email and no body to the email for the text, if you're doing a text only campaign?
So I'll cover that here. So there's, there's a few options. You could actually, if you wanted to reuse the same campaign for an email, or for your landing page too, kind of doubling it up. But you can see here, I didn't cover this the first time through, but there's a subject message body and a, a text message if sent by text. So if you just want the same, you know, if you're just going to be using this for text, really all you need to do is put it in the subject, because that'll go out by, by text. But if you're going to combine this and use the same campaign for both the landing page, which could accept email or phone numbers for texting, you'll probably want to put in both. Because in this case, then you could have, let's say if you were going to use this for both, you know, this would be the text message that we want to send to them. And then you could do something different for email, thanks for registering. And then you could have an email body that goes out there, and maybe, you know, a picture of the lemon oil that you're, you know, giving away or something, so, yeah, it's a combination.
If you wanted to send a picture via text, where would you do that?
That is down here, actually. If it's sent by text message, you can choose the image, and then it'll pop up and, you know, maybe we, I guess I have Juniper in here, but either way, you could send whatever you wanted to by text as well, automatically.
Awesome, awesome. All right, cool. And then, so we've, we've gone over using the landing pages, using a text in campaign, and this is to collect your contacts at an event. And then finally, we have paper, which a lot of people, to be fair, still use. And some people have hesitations about texting their information in, or about, you know, entering it on a website, and they just want to write it down. And yes, that does add a little bit of extra work for you, but however you can get that contact, get that contact. And Greg actually shared a really great tip that ties in directly into how you can manually enter. When we were talking earlier, Greg, you shared a really great tip with entering your manual, manually written contacts.
Sure, yeah, I mean, so, you know, you could, you could enter it directly, enter all the contacts in directly here by clicking create, and then typing all their information in, and doing it that way. But we've, what I've seen and heard from others is that it's faster to type that into a spreadsheet. So if you make a spreadsheet, which I don't have in front of me to show you, but you could add a column, so like, you could have a column for name, a column for email, a column for phone number, and then type all their names quickly into a spreadsheet, save it as a CSV file, and then under contact settings, you can come and import that file. So it's just a nice way to streamline that, you know, if you end up with many, many leads, you know, if it's a handful or something, it might be easier to just type them right into contacts. But if you're at a, at a vendor event, you know, you get 100, 200, 300 leads, it's just easier, it saves a little bit of time to do it that way, instead of typing it in directly into GetOiling. And then you'll have it in spreadsheet format too, which is also handy for other things, so.
And when you, Greg, when you upload your, your list of names that you now have in spreadsheet form that you've put in, you're able to, on the next page, add a tag to those new contacts?
Yes, you certainly can. Let's see if I can find a file here.
So if these are people who signed up on paper for the lemon giveaway?
Yep.
Then, then this is what you would do?
So on the next page, you want to make sure, of course, that the fields are matching up. So, you know, it'll try to detect it, but if it doesn't recognize the field name, you know, you want to make sure that like email and name and phone number are mapped up here. But once you do that, you can, or below that, you can choose what tags you want to add. So let's say I want to add my lemon tag that I just did, and then hit start, and it'll import them right in.
Perfect, perfect. Kathy says, the last place we attended a vendor event, the building had wifi, however, it was not strong enough, therefore, it was not working for us. Good to have a backup plan. Absolutely, you should always have paper as a backup. And, and have text as well, I mean, people have their phones, so, everybody's got their phone on them all the time. All right, so Debbie asked a really good question. Can to-do items be organized under main list headers? I.e., list header, packed car with items listed under the, you know, the items that need to be put in the car? That would be pretty cool.
That would be pretty cool, yeah. Right now, the to-do items are all just lists. I mean, you could probably subcategorize them, maybe like by putting your main category, I could show you that rather than with my hands.
Yeah, you could say, put in car, you know, put in car dash paper materials, put in car dash oils, right? You know, put in dash flip kits.
You could do like, you know, maybe this is venue prep and that sort of thing, and down here, whatever. We could have, like you were saying, you could just basically put that header in, in front, so.
We, we'll file, we'll file that one away into our wishlist of, of system features. Awesome, all right. So Robin says, I am first timer to this, where will I be able to find the recording? Robin will be sending it to your email. It's since you did register to, to join here, and you got the email that we were going to be live today, we will be sending you that, as well as a link to our replays. Wendy asks, is there an extra cost for the text feature?
Yes, there is. It's depending on whether you're in a monthly or an annual GetOiling plan, it's either $9 a month extra if you're month to month, or it's, I believe, $99 a year for annual. And you get your own phone number with that, and that also, then you can receive texts. So just to be clear, without that text in keyword, or without the buying your own phone number, you can, you can still send text messages out of GetOiling. Just people, when they reply, it kind of goes into a black hole, because it's a shared number. But if you buy your own number, then replies come back to you, and then you can have this text in keyword, and have all that automation hooked up to that. So it's a really, really cool option. That also includes actually making and receiving phone calls through there, like when you have that set up. If I go to the contact manager, I'm sure I can probably find, oh yeah, you can see here that there's a call link. And of course, I picked the contacts that have no phone numbers. But, but there's a call link here. So what it, what it does, because it's on, you know, I'm on my computer right now, it'll call your phone, like it'll, you know, it'll call your mobile phone, and then you'll answer, and then it will dial and connect to your contacts. So you don't even have to like dial their number. And people can also call your number too, and it'll ring your mobile phone that you have on file underneath your contact info, which is under, if you click on your name, it'll take you to do that.
Awesome. Sherry asks, if I'm using text, I assume you ask them to put their name and email plus the word?
You could do that, you know, that would be nice to get their name. I mean, if you could certainly get people to do that. But otherwise, it comes up, just as, actually, as you can see on the screen here, it comes up as the city and state and country typically, and then a phone number.
So what you could do, if you want to make sure that you're getting a name to put into that contact, and this requires a little bit of manual entry on, on your part, but I definitely recommend it. If you're going to do a text in campaign, and these are people that, that you've met before, then you can say, you know, thanks for registering, and then the next, the next text that goes out can say, you know, type in your name, so I, you know, so I know who I'm, I'm chatting with, right? So you could put that in the automation sequence as well. All right. Let's see, that's great. Would we need to make a new spreadsheet each time, so that importing doesn't double up on contacts you imported before? I would make a new spreadsheet each time, Wendy, because you want to tag those contacts specifically. You want to make sure that, that they have that, that qualifier on them, so that you're able to know where they came in from, and, and you're able to apply the correct follow-up plans.
Yeah, and when you do import a second time, it'll, it will deduplicate by email address.
Right, right. Okay. Hey, Robin, per your question about additional businesses and the use of our system, shoot me an email, ashley@getoiling.com, and I can chat with you about that further. Laura says, if you're sending them samples, wouldn't you need the address captured somewhere as well? In this instance, I'm talking about maybe you have samples that you bring with you to the event, and, and when they enter their information, you're doing that direct exchange. That's, it's, you know, it's kind of up to you, as, as far as where you would want to do that. And if you wanted to require that, then we could do that as well. Okay. Regarding phone numbers, I know, guys, if you want to learn more about, more in-depth about the, the two-way texting feature and how it integrates with GetOiling, and ways that you can use campaigns and stuff with it, actually, if you go back to the playlist for this weekly work session on YouTube, the very first one that we did, we talked about this. And there's definitely inside the 90 Day Challenge, if you're a GetOiling member at basic or higher, in the help section, there's definitely some in-depth there as well. There are ways to port numbers from elsewhere, from other services. They do take some time. If you want to do something like that, just shoot us an email, info@getoiling.com. That'll get to Greg, who can answer those questions that would otherwise make my marketing head spin. All right, I want to pop back over, you guys, to, to our presentation, so that we can wrap up, because there was one more really important thing that we need to cover. All right, can you see me screen? Of course, I can see my screen, but I can't, I can't minimize these other fields. This, guys, when you get new technology, sometimes it's problematic. You think when you buy the nice thing, it's going to make the problems go away? No, 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 there's always problems. All right, cool. So we've talked about our, our lead systems for, during the event. Now let's talk about the thing that frustrates everyone the most, and it's also the thing that most of us are doing to sabotage our success. It's dropping the ball, that's going through all of this trouble, spending all of this time, going through all of this effort, and then having nothing to show for it. Maybe not knowing how to follow up properly, or just forgetting to, or just having those stacks and stacks and stacks of papers with names and email addresses or phone numbers on them, with various boxes potentially checked about maybe their interest in attending a class. But you've got life happening all the time, and how are you going to manage getting in touch with every single one of those people, and helping them individually, and speaking with them? And oh my God, now it's overwhelming, and I just dropped all the balls, right? I'm sure some of you have felt this way. And now, we're going to talk about how you can avoid that ever happening, and make sure that every single person that you come into contact with through an event like this goes exactly to where they need to go, and you know exactly what to do and when, because you have your handy dandy to-do list, we're going to talk about that. All right, so guys, the fortune is in the follow-up. If you aren't going and connecting immediately, and then again and again over time with these people that you connect with at these events, it was all for nothing, all right? Now, you may, you, there, there may be some, you know, some, some happy feelings, and maybe you really connected with somebody and shared something with them that changed their life. There's, there's always value there. But we're talking about the growth of your business. If you aren't effectively following up with these people, you've completely wasted your time, and we don't want you to do that. So let's talk about how we can not drop the ball when we do our vendor events. First, we're going to create a post-event follow-up plan. So just like that follow-up plan that Greg showed you how to make in the beginning, we're going to make one for after the event, right? So that when we go through and we find all of those people who opted in via text, via kiosk on, on a computer, or via paper that we've uploaded, we're going to go and find that lemon tag that we added, or whatever the tag might be for that event, and we're going to apply a follow-up plan to them. And that follow-up plan is going to give us a to-do list that will show up until it's done, right? And show you when it's past due, you know, that you need to send an email to all of these people. And then, you know, maybe five days later, you need to send an email, or send a text, or follow up in some way with all of these people. That way, you never drop the ball. All right, so you first want to make sure that you reach out within 24 hours. Now, if you have a small handful of people, then you can be a lot more personal about this. You know, you can say, hey, we talked about such and such, it was so great to meet you. You know, wanted to let you know, I do classes in the area, is that something that you're interested in? You know, and then continue with that conversation, right? Or however that might go. If you have a lot more than just a handful of people, and you don't have time to do that personally, then you can also use a saved reply, right? Oh, and by the way, make sure that you are prioritizing sharing information with people that you've recently met. Okay, because if you let a week, six months pass by, they're going to forget about that entire conversation, most likely. So your opportunity is hot within the first 24 hours. And then beyond that, it goes to a steep decline in terms of their interest and receptivity. So you've got to be on the ball immediately, that's why follow-up plans, campaigns, and, and some of these techniques that we're teaching you are so, so critical. Now, saved replies are invaluable for this. They're actually invaluable for a ton of things, and you may or may not be using them inside of the GetOiling system. You know, when you get a new member started, and you want to orient them as to how to get to the virtual office, or what YLgo is, or why they should get onto essential rewards if they're not, you can have that in a, you know, in a saved reply email that you can customize or personalize for your, you know, for your new member. You can do the same thing for post-event follow-ups, you know, so hey, this is so-and-so, myself, right? You know, we met yesterday at such-and-such event, and you signed up for whatever you were offering, right? I wanted to let you know of some opportunities coming up, you know, I've got classes coming up soon, or I've got some more information I want to share with you, whatever it is. Use a saved reply, that way, when you have 100 people on a list, all you have to do is select people from your contact manager who have that tag from that event, and then you create a message to send just to those people with that tag, and then you send it. And now you've just followed up with all of those people all at once. And by the way, if you're using the GetOiling Digital Up Lane Coach, that is significantly increasing your progress toward your income-producing activity goal, because what you just did was follow up, right? Pretty cool. Now, you can personalize those saved replies as well with field tags. So that's where you, it says maybe contact first name. So if you want to send it out, you know, so hey, we met at such-and-such place yesterday, you could say, hi, Joe, right? But it just says contact first name, because Joe was entered into the system as Joe, right? So personalize that. Obviously, if you have smaller, a smaller list of people to follow up with, then you can be a lot more personal if you want. And then, of course, you drip information with campaigns. So think about the giveaway that you're doing. Is it a particular kind of oil, is it a product line? Are you, are you using a particular kind of focus at your table in terms of the, the materials that you're sharing, the things that you're demonstrating? Design a campaign, put that on your pre-event to-do list, so that people can get onto that campaign and get that additional dripped information related to what they learned at your table in days following the event. That again, like them hearing from you, being able to get into that information, that is going to warm them up so much more quickly than if you just called them a week later and say, hey, I was selling oils at the table at such-and-such event, do you have time this week to sit down with me? Which way do you think is going to work better, right? All right, so I want to ask if you guys noticed a theme today? We are going to show you, yeah, let me finish this slide, and we're going to go back and show you how you could do, you know, just a reminder on the follow-up plan, the, the saved replies and some of those other things. So remember the theme here, pre-event checklist, campaigns, landing pages, follow-up plans, saved replies. Guys, these are all components that you can reuse over and over and over and over again for future events. How much time do you think that can save you, right? How much time do you think that you can now spend on income-producing activities, on following up with those leads that you generate at the events, right? You're so much more efficient if you have systems that support you. And if you're already a GetOiling member, you have the most powerful system in the world to support you to grow your young living business. Whether you're doing things offline, going to vendor events, and holding classes in your local area, or you're, or you're going online, and you're doing online classes, and, and using Facebook groups and, and things like that to reach more people. We've got the systems to support you, and you have just learned some of the most powerful ways you can use our systems, customize them for yourself, and set them up for your success in your vendor events. So I'm going to let Greg share, and we will show you some of those follow-up post-event strategies. Real time.
Cool, okay, so I think you, save replies is kind of where it all started, right? So I'll go under contact settings, and that's under save replies over here. So what this is, is basically like a message template. And so you can write whatever you want to here, but, you know, having that on hand for, let's say if you do multiple of these things, can be very, very handy, because then you don't have to think about it every time, like, well, what's my follow-up message? You can either copy an existing one, or by clicking this little icon, or you can click create. And so I'll just call this my farmer's market follow-up, or save reply, I should say. And this just prefills your subject and body. So what I'll do here, I'll just say, you know, thanks for coming to our booth at the farmer's market. And then, you know, maybe there's, this is where the tags come in to personalize, like Ashley was talking about, there's this little icon up here that looks like a little speech bubble. So there's a bunch of different fields that you can do here, you can insert, but I'll just go ahead and insert their first name, and so that inserts the tag. And when you send that mail, then that will be replaced with their name, so that it looks like you've sent them a personal message, which you have, but it only took you the time that it took to compose. but it only took you the time that it took to compose and send one message. Thank you for coming, et cetera, et cetera. You can put whatever you want to in there. I'll go ahead and create the saved reply. Now, if we go under the contact manager, while Ashley was sharing, I went and I tagged a few customers or a few contacts as Lemon. So I'll show you how to filter down on that. So click the filters button, click in tags, here's Lemon. I'll hit filter and it'll shrink it down to those list of three people that I had, or three demo users. And I'll deselect them all at the moment. Three demo accounts here. And so this is where you would send your mail to all of them. So let's say you want to follow it by mail, or in this case it's text, you could, you could do both actually. But I'll just show mail in this case, click actions, click mail. And your saved reply, uh, I'll just click in here because it inserts a saved reply where you click. And the farmer's market save reply is in there and it just fills that out. You can edit it before sending if you want to. You know, that's always an option with the saved reply and you could actually use multiple saved replies if you wanted to. But so that prefills it and all you have to do is hit send mail and it would send it out. And you could even pre-schedule these if you wanted to. Kind of overlaps a little bit with the campaigns, but for a follow-up, you could just hit send and it'll go right out. Let's see, what else was there here? Was there?
So I mentioned there was a follow-up plan, saved replies, the field tags and campaigns. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And we've gone into that in some of the other trainings in greater depth. So guys, definitely feel free to go back and reference those, but I'm sorry, Greg.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah. So this is like, you've got to filter down, you know, like, okay, this is the day after the event or however many days it is, it is, maybe it's three, you know? You've got 300 leads. So it took you all the time, whatever. But so you filtered it down. And, uh, so this is where you can do that. So you can mail them all and, you know, maybe text them all. And then this is where you can like bulk add all of your automatic follow-up. So you can come in here, you've got your, your list. I want to add them to my farmer's market. I guess that's a text-in campaign, but if I had a different one for follow-up, I could do that. Let's say, I'll just pretend that's the one. And then I also want to add them to my, I'll just also pretend that I have a farmer's market follow-up plan. And then you could also maybe add them, add additional tags saying like, I followed up with them or something like that. And then go ahead and hit add, remove, and it'll automatically add all of that for you, which then of course, uh, you know, the campaign will automatically send out the emails or texts for you. And then the follow-up plan will pop up on your dashboard too as reminders. So it's a, yeah, very quick.
Just remember that the, um, the follow-up plan, that's your internal to-do, right? And the campaign is going to automatically send things out on your behalf. So you can plan ahead of time what you want to have sent out on your behalf and plug that into a campaign. The follow-up plan is what's going to remind you to take an action yourself. Um, and in doing so, obviously you could add people to a campaign after you come back. That is something that you can do. Uh, like if you are uploading paper entries, you can add them to a campaign so that they start receiving those as though they had registered on a landing page. Or you could go and send that one-off message. So a follow-up, would it be a campaign thing, right? A follow-up would be reaching out and saying, hey, we met at such-and-such place. Super great to meet you. Want to let you know about this thing I've got coming up. And that's, and that's what you could put that into a saved reply like Greg just showed. All right. We got some questions. It's, I think we can officially call it Q and A time, right?
I think so.
All right, great. So Lisa asks, uh, let me see, actually Sheree asked, can we set up a phone number for the event and then cancel and set up again for the next event? Assuming they're a long time apart. I don't think that's necessarily something I would recommend doing with, especially not with our system. I mean, the number that you select is your business phone number and you can choose to have it forward to your personal number. And then of course, when, if so long as you're texting from within the Get Oiling system, it's only interacting with that one phone number. So I would stick with the one. If, I hope that helps. Um, Lisa asks, if a contact opts out after receiving an email, even if you have the tag in a campaign, will the system automatically know not to send to that person?
Correct. Yep. So if anyone opts out, like takes them off all emails, they won't get any future emails. There's a separate opt-out for texts and emails. So if they've opted out of email, it doesn't opt them out of texts. They would have to do both.
Awesome. Lynn asks, is there a way to choose which ones not to send? Sometimes the majority of lists, I want to send information, but would like deselect a contact in the group. So if you wanted, so this would be basically you'd be tagging a whole bunch of people and then there's some people with that tag that you don't want to send to.
Right. And it kind of depends on like, you know, do you want to keep them tagged with that? Cause that's one option. So let's say, uh, this person here is somebody you don't want on your lemon list anymore. Select them, actions, add campaign follow-up planner tags. And then you could say, I want to remove the lemon tag from them and then hit add, remove. And then they'll be removed from that list. So that's one way of doing it. The other option is depending on the size of your list, you could just say like, there's a select all option on this page anyway. So let's say there's 20 of them or something. You could select them all and then unselect the one that you want or send to, and then you can send to selected contacts instead of all contacts. So that's a couple of different ways of doing it, depending on how permanent you want that removal to be. And maybe want to add another, another tag to them so that you can visually identify them later, like lemon, not really lemon or something like that.
Yeah, tags are internal. The only instance where your prospect is going to potentially interact with a tag is if you're using a text-in campaign, because the text-in code that they're sending, the word that you choose is also going to be applied as a tag in their campaign. And actually Jan asked, hi Dan, uh, let's say you do a farmer's market in April, tag is lemon. Then you have another one in the fall, different event, same tag, lemon. Okay. We're talking about events that are far apart. Listen, if you're doing the same promotion, you can repeat that. You can use that tag. You just want to make sure that you're, well, actually, ooh, Greg, uh, what about people who were added around? Like can we, um, can we filter for people who were added to the system before or after a certain date? This would be the way that you would differentiate if you ran two lemon campaigns, right?
Yeah, there's, uh, you can sort, but you can't currently filter by that. But what you could do is you could change the tag essentially. So like, let's say you have your crew of lemon, uh, the people that have, oops, let me deselect all. The crew of people that are on your lemon tag, you could add a new tag to that group. Say like, uh, this is how you would like change a tag. So come in here and say, I want to add lemon, uh, and then it was, let's say farmer's market. April or something, I'm capitalizing, but so then he would add that and then go ahead. And then once that's done, come back in here and then remove the lemon tag. And so you sort of like, you have your lemon tag that doesn't have anybody on it. And then once you've sort of processed them, you put them onto another list, essentially a different tag.
There you go. Perfect. So people don't have to have the same tag all the time. You can remove the tag from them or you can, in a bulk action like Greg just showed, change their tag out, swap it if you wanted to. All right. Rodka says, sometimes a prospect is a vendor, I don't want to leave phone number and email or just one in the scribble. So it's hard to read the, that the, okay. Do you have suggestions for a good submission form? So, um, I know that a lot of you probably have, have shared the frustration of having scribbly forms. I would, like, my advice would be obviously have paper as a backup. You know, if, if it's not, uh, you know, if other options aren't available, then use paper. But make sure that whether it's through paper or ideally even more so through that kiosk landing page or the text campaign, um, people can't receive the valuable thing, the lead magnet, right? That you're giving to them unless they provide you with their information, right? So, um, there's a number of ways to do that, to get it done. It really depends on what the thing of value is that you're offering at your table. If it is a sample, then, uh, you know, you can basically say that, you know, I have a guide that goes with this. It's really important that you have it. So first I need to make sure that I've got correct contact information for you. And then, uh, and then we'll be in touch and I'll send you home with this, this, uh, this sample. You get to dictate how that goes. Uh, you get to decide what the gate is and how it functions between what value you have to offer and, uh, and the prospects who might come up to your table. And of course, uh, anyone who you would want to interact with as a member or a potential member of your team, is going to be someone who respects those, uh, those boundaries and guidelines that you set for yourself. So that's my suggestion. All right. Do we have any more questions while we have, you know, another, another minute here? We actually covered a lot in, uh, in good time today.
Yeah, it was a lot of good information.
Yeah. Awesome. So glad you liked that, Jan. And thank you all for being here today. Hi Paige. All right.
I don't see any other questions on here. Just kind of scrolling through chat to see if we missed anything.
Fantastic. All right. So be on the lookout for the replay later today. Yes, Lisa, right now these videos are hosted on our Get Oiling YouTube channel under the playlist, Weekly Work Sessions. You will also get a link to that today when we send the replay of this out to you guys via email. Oh, we may have some, some event doers now. Some of you may have just changed your mind about events. I'm so excited to hear that. I think, um, I think you're, you're so spot on to do it. It is really a powerful way to grow. Um, oh, we've got a couple. Got a lot, quite a few questions popping in now at the last minute. Kathy is asking about YLshare, if it's integrated.
So yeah, to answer that question, actually there, um, if you, like, I'll tell you this and then I'll explain a little bit more. If you go to getoiling.com, there's like a little pop-up chat widget in the corner. It has a link to a video that one of our, it was a training that one of our customers did. And I think it's about 25 minutes into the video, she explains how she's got it integrated. Basically what she did was, uh, you know, YLshare I think has a link on there where, uh, you know, it's got a really actually cool feature where you can, um, where your visitor can go there and type in their name and address and Young Living will ship out the product sample for you and they charge you for them depending on how you have it set up. But YLshare gives you a link that you can put on your website wherever you want to. And this, uh, this lady decided to put it in her menu. You can customize your site menu under my site settings. And, um, under, there's the site menu here. So you can go in there and add a custom menu item to it. Or the other very common place is to come under my site and, uh, my story and photo. And you could add a link there like, hey, get a free sample, click here, pops it up, YLshare. So you can integrate it in there if you want to.
Yeah. And if you guys actually want to see more of how that particular leader uses our system, if you go to the, if you're not signed into Get Oiling and you go to our, our page and click like you're going to checkout and buy the system, before you leave that page, there's going to be a pop-up. And also I think there's a pop-up on the homepage too, like talking about how a Young Living team leader, uh, how they use Get Oiling. There's actually, that's a pretty cool one for you guys to watch to learn, uh, you know, kind of some comparisons of our system to others, and then also how to use us with YLshare specifically.
I just added the link actually to chat.
Great.
If you want to grab that.
Great. Awesome. All right. Kathy asks, um, let me see, that was Kathy's question. What do you say to people at vendors events? Marla, that is, uh, that's a, that's a, that's broad. There are a lot of, of, of good trainings out there from high-ranking Young Living distributor leaders who are doing really good work with vendor events. There's a lot of different approaches that you can use with great success. Our clients actually vary widely in terms of the approach that they take. I would just say that before you even decide what you're going to say to them, that you get the systems in place first so that you don't get hung up in the process or miss any of the steps or any of those opportunities to follow up with people that you do eventually connect with. And, um, and yeah, there, you know, there will come a day, I think at some point in the future, where maybe we can kind of compile, you know, a guide, a resource guide or something like that for you guys. But there are far more qualified experts on that specific topic that are out there right now, sharing it with the world, who are also Young Living distributors. All right. Uh, you are welcome, Sheree, and we appreciate you. Awesome. Jaclyn has a class next week. She's going to do this for the class. Yeah. What do you suggest to have on the table? Again, I really would recommend that you go out and check out some of the leaders in, in Young Living that are out there doing great events and sharing what they're doing that's working on YouTube. I would actually, I would just go to YouTube and maybe type in Young Living vendor events. I think there's also, uh, you know, on Google, you could find that as well. When you say samples, do you mean sample packets? Not necessarily. Um, you know, some people make their own rollerballs, like little, little mini things that they actually like package up at home to give away. There is a million and one different ways that you can do this and there is potential for success with all of them. Just make sure that you have the right systems in place to back you up. All right. Okay. I've heard the PSK is the best thing to have on the table. That's what people, that's what you want people to buy. I think that that is a very common approach, Marla, or at least components of it for sure. Uh, and so that's, that's something that, that you could put out. I've heard of people putting just all the different kinds of diffusers out on the table. And then people were really curious, like, oh, that smells amazing. What is that? Ooh, can I have one of those in my house? Oh yeah. Which one do you like? And then, and check this out. This is really cool, which she said, this is one of our clients. She said, um, that this, this is the retail price for this diffuser. I don't remember which one that was pointed out. This is the retail price for it. But when you get our premium starter kit that has all of these oils and all of this information and everything you need, it actually includes that and look at how much you save. That's a really cool way to sell a premium starter kit at a table like that. It's, uh, that's, that's definitely a thing that you can do. But I've heard of people taking the individual oils and talking about them and then maybe diffusing one or two or whatever. Like there's, we are not the authority on the minutia where that's concerned. But we are the authority on, and what we are here and qualified very highly to help you with is to make sure that whatever approach you take, you take it with the right systems and structure behind you so that you're using your time effectively and getting everything that you really need to get out of your efforts. All right. I believe that wraps that up. Wendy says, these trainings are available to people who do not have a Get Oiling site yet, correct? Correct. Yes. Uh, this is not exclusive. This was really designed, if, you know, even if you're not a member of Get Oiling, what you've learned today is that you need to have systems in place. You may use other to-do, you know, you use whatever you like. But, but we're here to help you and of course you will learn more about how we can help you if you're not a Get Oiling member, if you tune in. All right. Fantastic. Uh, thank you guys so much for being here and, uh, and for, for being just awesome and asking great questions. And we can't wait to hear your success stories. Those of you who have events coming up, please, please send us an email. Uh, after you've had your event, let us know how it goes. Let us know, you know, how much easier the follow-up process was, how much more simple and, and efficient. And, ah, dude, he's released, deep breath, not stressful, the planning process was because you had that checklist and that little coach reminding you what you needed to do. All right. We will see you guys next week and thanks again.
Thanks, everyone.